You'll get thirty when they have a D's on that.
Ah.
They have a light one too.
Okay. Matt's got that one.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your utmost patience at this point. I do appreciate it. I'd like to welcome you to a special meeting of the planning board this evening. We have just a few quick orders of business and I promise we'll proceed right into our public hearings directly thereafterwards. So, thank you for your indulgence tonight and I do appreciate you being here. Board members, you have an agenda in front of you at this point and I don't have any changes to it, so I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Remove.
And do I? Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have unanimously. We have one second dwelling application that's before us tonight, which is Gloria Jurecki and Nine East Street LLC. Board members, I hope you've had a chance to read this. I don't think I have anything from staff. Unless you have any questions for them, what's the pleasure of the board?
I was just started the other night. Motion to approve the secondary dwelling per staff comments.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Okay, that brings us to our public hearings. First thing is Article 36. This is a zoning map change from LC five to R five for portions of Brant Point as recommended in the Brant Point area plan. Properties included in this article located off of Stone Barn Way, North Beach Street, Eastern Street, Cliff Road, Arbor Way, Harbor View Way. Andrew or Leslie, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the input that we received at the last meeting, and there is a proposed motion in your packet, we're proposing to go ahead with the Stone Barn Way properties and North Beach Street, but remove the Eastern and Harbor View properties for further study and referral back to the Brant Point Association.
Okay.
The Brant Point Association, the Brant Point Area Plan Work Group.
Correct.
So, I can follow meetings for that.
So, the motion would be in the affirmative to move the LC properties again at North Beach and Stone Barn.
Sure. Just from a procedural aspect, because I know that this and the other thing will also be remanded back to the Planning and Economic Development Commission. So, I'm assuming that that's something that's going to come up onto their agenda for March before we just start moving ahead?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I just wanted to be real clear that there does have to be kind of a rational nexus as to how we're going to get there at this point. Okay. Board members, any discussion on this? If not, let me open the public hearing and see if anyone's here who'd like to comment on this. Not seeing anyone at this point.
Motion to propose a public hearing.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
What's the motion?
The proposed motion is included in your packet and it's an affirmative motion on the properties that I had talked about earlier. So, you see that there's, basically, it's all the map twenty-nine properties and the forty-two point four point ones are all deleted.
Remember, where's the motion? Is this the final recommendation on the twenty-one page?
The motion is, it's after the map, page eight. Look at the bottom of your sheet, please. Page eight. So, it's moved that the zoning map of the town be amended by placing the following properties currently located in limited commercial to R five. There's a list of Stone Barn Way, North Beach, Arbor Way, properties only. And those are reflected on the map before you.
I just have one question.
Yes, please.
Was there some discussion about number twenty-nine forty, the one that has split between Cliff Road and down below? Because we had some discussion about the fact that the one up on Cliff is different than the other half of the zone lot falling down in North Beach.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's why I'm curious, because that's this one.
Isn't that a different?
No, that's not it.
Oh, that is in another article where it's changed to R one.
So, we just ignore that on here? Or is the upside getting changed to R five also?
Now, the upside is the one on, there's a long skinny one, is that the one you're referring to?
The one that goes from Cliff Road all the way down in North Beach, they own all the way through?
Yeah, no, that stays, that was, that's being changed to R five. So, it's not going up further. It's just a portion of.
That's what I'm saying. So, the other half of the lot on Cliff Road is going to be a different zone from the other half of the zone lot below the cliff.
Right now, yes.
That we're headed in that direction.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, well, I guess we're making a motion to make a positive recommendation
for. Yes.
As amended.
As amended?
Yes. Motion's now made in second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's a three-term vote by the board. Next thing is Article thirty-seven. This is a zoning map change from RC and LC to CN for portions of Brant Point as recommended in the Brant Point area plan. Properties included in this article located off of Eastern Street, Harbor View Way, McKay Way, or some other pronunciation. Yeah, I know. It depends upon where you come from. North Beach Street, South Beach Street, North Water Street, and C Street. Andrew or Leslie, please.
Mr. Chairman, again, there was a lot of discussion at the last planning board hearing on this topic and so we request to move forward with a much smaller group of properties. This includes the Nantucket Hotel, the Beachside, the White Elephant property, and a small group on North Beach only. So, the properties that we heard testimony about, the residential grouping along North Beach, along Harbor View Way, those are all removed in this article.
Yep.
And the Harbor House property is removed and those properties are going to be referred back to the Brant Point area work group for further study and recommendation.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Yep, please.
You know, in this strip on North Beach Street, there are a couple of George Nyrens, there's a couple of private homes. They're going to become pre-existing non-performing?
Yes.
Do they know that?
I've spoken to them and there is the ability to continue, you know, extensions and other things. They're just grandfathered properties and they can be extended and changed depending on the nature of it. It will depend on what relief they need. But a lot of it is issued through the zoning administrator, so it's not.
Oh, that's right, because it's not increasing in number.
Correct.
Just want to make sure George knows this, because they're in Florida. Okay?
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is still open on this. If anyone would like to comment on it.
Does that include the?
Would ma'am, would you please come up to the microphone? This is being recorded. It's on television as well, too, so, and if you'll identify yourself with the record and where your premises are.
Alita Store, twenty-four North Water Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Does that include the residential homes on North Water Street down towards the Eastern Street?
They're all coming out.
They're removed.
Pardon?
They're taken out of the article.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
We have another solution. Andrew, will you just put that in?
Sir? Hi.
Hi. I'm just wondering.
For the record, if you'll identify yourself and.
Oh, Todd Booth, eighty Eastern Street.
Thank you, sir.
Does this include the houses along Eastern Street there?
Yes.
Eighty Eastern Street?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want this? Can you take this?
I have that.
Those properties are removed.
From the.
That same group of properties along Eastern. So, they would stay in their current zoning district right now.
Okay, so they're just staying as is.
So, they're going to go back to the area plan work group?
And when?
That'll, you'll get it.
For this?
I.
I'm the chairman of the Brant Point work group and I can't imagine we're going to have everybody back here that was actually on the work group. Some of them are away. I wouldn't imagine we'd start talking about this until April, because there may be a special town meeting in the fall where this would come back. Not as CN, but I think we have another solution to leave it in ROH and allow guest houses, because that's really the big concern, is that the guest houses are there and some of them are being sold for single-family dwellings. CN did not work for that. So, that was the big discussion the last time. So, I expect it to come back. We'll start talking about it maybe in April. But right now, it's off town meeting. There's no change at the moment.
Okay. And you're sure it's that property, eighty Eastern?
Right here.
Well, you're right next to.
Can we focus this through staff, please? I'd really appreciate that.
Who's he next to?
Yeah.
Sir?
The row of houses, there's basically, one, two, three, four, five houses and behind you is the Harbor House property.
Correct.
Yeah. Those are all removed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Just a quick thing to Andrew, and I hope my colleagues will agree here with me at this point, is that we should probably just put some type of notation underneath that the articles, or at least something just to denote that they're going back before that Brant Point area plan.
Okay.
And probably just, even though I know you're the chairperson, maybe just a quick letter from us or something that says it's formally going back before the Planning and Economic Development Commission per our request.
Right. We intended to have some comments ready for the meeting on the tenth.
Great.
That would include.
I just, yeah, I just didn't want to let that come off.
Sure.
I have a question. Throughs chair.
Yeah, please.
Do we, as a planning commission, have to reconstitute the Brant Point and the Surfside Area Plan work groups in order to? We have a small working group out of Surfside. We don't have that at Brant Point. Do we have to vote it back in again?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, when is the next planning commission meeting?
March twenty-four.
All right. So, we can just do it at that point?
If. Yeah, I do, I'm thinking more of a May-type meeting time.
And traditionally with the area plans, I know, I don't think we've ever really done this before where we've reconstituted a group. So, I don't know if there may be some, with the area plans, we normally put out some type of public notice as well, too.
Correct.
We may want to explore that issue a little bit more and see who else we can garner into this.
I don't want to start over with new people that know nothing about the Brant Point area plan.
Well, that's going to be, that's going to be at the wisdom, I think, of, that's going to be another discussion to be had at the NPNEDC.
Okay.
Okay? Because there may be some varying opinions on that, but, you know, I think that reconstituting these things is a little bit of a requirement here, because I have to admit, walking into this meeting for its first time, I thought the area plan groups had kind of already settled this and quite to my chagrin when we opened the public hearing here, that was a whole different story altogether. And I really felt a little blindsided by that. So, you know, I'd like to think that the membership that's going to constitute these things will actually be strong enough to bring forward their proposals, because I don't feel like that happened at the last one to the extent that it should have. So, what kind of transacted at our last public hearing was, I think, took a lot of people off, a little bit off kilter here.
It was the CN.
But again, I understand that.
The CN. They didn't know what.
Nonetheless, this should have been ironed out at that level, is what I'm saying, because we do, when we do count upon the people in the area plan to kind of help get us here and when they start all showing up saying, "Well, that's not what we want," I don't think that's a good reflection of how everything proceeded at this point. So, I, and that's why I'm saying to you, I'm just, I think that's a discussion we need to have at the NPNEDC to really take a serious look at getting individuals on board who, you know, are going to, when they come forward at this meeting, there should be no surprises. There should be no surprises left behind.
And as opposed, Surfside, just so you know, Surfside has a small, basically an implementation work group that's already been set up. So, it's not sort of left out, like Brant Point was.
Yep. I understand. Okay.
All right.
All right. So, thank you and I appreciate just.
I'll make a motion to make a positive recommendation on, what is this one?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven is amended?
Yep.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have unanimously. It brings us to Article thirty-eight. This is a zoning map change.
I just have one more question. Will I be notified? If you want to give your information, I think, to Andrew, that when we start having these meetings, probably now, I guess in May, then we can notify you. Maybe you get involved with the group.
Thanks. Okay. So, I'm sorry. Article thirty-eight. Zoning map change from RC and LC to CDT for properties located off of North Water and C Streets, Harbor View Ways, South Beach Street, Steamboat Wharf, Commercial Street, and Washington Street. Andrew, Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, the, again, based on the testimony that we heard at the last meeting, the proposed motion would remove the properties located on North Water and C Street and also the group at Commercial and Washington for further study. We recommend going forward with just the steamship or steamship authorities, Steamboat Wharf, and the Yacht Club property. And that's how the motion is written.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Nope. Okay. Public hearing is still open on this. If anyone would like to comment? Not hearing anything? Board members, do you have anything else?
Make a motion to close.
Thank you. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion to approve or make a positive recommendation on Article thirty-eight.
As amended.
As amended.
Duly noted. And that's now made in second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article forty, zoning map change from RC to ROH for properties located off of Fayette Meter Union and Washington Streets. Andrew, Leslie, please.
Mr. Chairman, this article, the last time, had two issues. One was that a property that was included in the map had not been properly identified. We corrected that with the mailing. And we did receive some testimony that property at the far end, on the upper end of Washington Street, would be delete, they requested their property be deleted. So, we have deleted the property at the end of Washington Street for further study and included the missing parcel and now have a proposed motion to proceed.
Which one was removed on this map? Andrew?
So.
That's what it's on.
Andrew? They're just asking, which one?
I got it. That's what I thought it was.
You got it? Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Public hearing is still open on this, so if anyone would like to comment? If not, I.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. And.
I'll make a motion to make a positive recommendation as amended.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article forty-three is next. This is a zoning map change from R ten to CN for properties located off of Hooper Farm and Fairgrounds Road and Sparks Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, we received testimony about this article as well at the last hearing and have deleted the properties for consideration along Sparks and Hooper Farm Road. The intent is to refer them to the Mid-Island work group, which we're in the process of constituting. We do recommend the inclusion of the one property at the corner of Fairgrounds and Old South Road, which you see is really, we think, more appropriately grouped with the other properties that are already being changed to CN. And the property owner there has been supportive of that change.
Great. Comments from the board? Not hearing anything? Public hearing is open for this still. Anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to offer?
I could.
Yeah, go.
Andrew, this one in the middle. Isn't it the former Golecki property?
Yeah.
They've been trying to get that zone commercial for a long time, because they use it for landscaping, they use it for all kinds of stuff. So, it's been used commercially, because I know there was a complaint made with the ZBA at one point about commercial use and this goes back twenty years.
We, that was, that was our point for looking at this and proposing it. We have not received much support or other comment from the affected parties, so.
I'm not sure you're going to be able to contact the affected party there?
Well, I think with the, with the reconstitution of the Mid-Island work group, they can take a closer look at it.
Okay.
I think that there was concern from the abutting residential neighbors about, you know, potential impacts of commercial use, which now if it's certain types of uses, could be a big impact. Certain uses might be a low impact. So, maybe there's room for discussion around those points.
I guess we don't know what to cross the street from it.
But I'm inclined to agree with staff. I think that, again, if there's going to be an article, too, that there were proponents for this thing, they don't want to show up and all we're getting is feedback that basically says, "It really shouldn't happen." I think, I think that seems like the most prudent thought to do is to bring it back into the Mid-Island area plan, have a much more serious discussion, because the proponents haven't really made an effort to show for this. Is there, is there any further comment?
I don't want to be seen after this.
No, I know.
The.
Public hearing.
Still a public hearing, so I just wanted to check in and see if anyone has any comments or wishes to discuss this article. Not seeing any, you write a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. And second.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And.
I'm going to make a positive recommendation as amended.
And a second.
The one brought me. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Next thing is Article forty-five.
Mr. Chairman, this is technically a reopening of the prior meeting, which you had closed, so you will need a motion. I think these are all unanimously supported, so there isn't an issue of voting on the side.
All right.
I'll make a motion to reopen it, forty-five?
Yes.
Okay. And do I hear a second to that?
All right.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Okay.
So, what's happening?
Mr. Chairman, this article, in the original vote, moved to create the CN district over a parcel that is actually jointly owned with its neighbor. So, what we want to do is to delete this parcel out of Article forty-five and reinsert it in Article forty-nine.
Okay.
We, because we're moving to a less intensive zoning district, and I did review this with the town moderator, she feels that that's within the scope of the, of the two articles.
Perfect.
So, what we're doing in forty-five is simply deleting out the property at sixty-eight, fifty-nine, sixteen Dave Kim.
Okay. So, board members, do you have any questions on what we're doing with this article at this point? Yep. Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is also reopened at this point as well, too, so if anyone would like to comment on this. Not seeing anyone.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. And.
I'm going to make a positive recommendation as amended.
Okay. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article forty-seven also requires a reopening of the public hearing at this point, so I'm going to ask my board to consider that thought.
Which one?
Article forty-seven.
I'll make a motion to reopen Article forty-seven.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. So, Andrew or Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, the original intent was to open Article forty-seven to remove several of the properties at, I guess, the western edge of the proposed overlay district.
Yep.
But since then, we have received information that the proponent of the overlay district wishes to not consider this at this time.
Mm-hmm.
So, we would ask the board to consider a motion of no.
Take no action.
Take no action on this particular article, so it may come back at a, at a later hearing for consideration.
Okay. Board members, any questions? No. The public hearing is reopened on this as well, so if anyone would like to comment on this? Not seeing anyone wishing to comment?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing again.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to change our previous recommendation to take no action at this time.
Okay. Right.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
And what about forty-eight?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, it's too late to advertise that for reopening of the public hearing. Again, that's fairly recent information. We will take it up at some point, and it will be a technical amendment before, read as a technical amendment, before town meeting.
Good.
Could bring it up at the twenty-fourth. Yeah, we could meet before, at the beginning of the twenty-fourth meeting, just the planning board.
We can, as long as we have the advertising, we can meet.
All right.
I can't give you a time tonight.
That's fair. Thank you.
Okay. Forty-nine.
Yes, so forty-nine again requires us to reopen the public hearing at this point, just to make that change that we talked about, so I'll ask one of you to please consider that.
I'll make a motion to reopen forty-nine.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. I'll ask Andrew or Leslie, but I think we already know what's going on at this point, unless there's any further comment.
Right. Mr. Chairman, and you can see that we're adding map sixty-eight parcel fifty-nine sixteen Dave Kim Lane into this particular article.
Great.
As shown on the map.
It's going in this detail.
Correct.
Yep. Any questions beyond that? And the public hearing is also open on this, so if anyone would like to comment. Not seeing anyone.
Motion to close the public hearing again.
Discussion, and second, sorry. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, and pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to favorable recommendation as amended.
Duly noted. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Next thing before is Article fifty-two. This is a zoning map change from LUG two to R forty for properties located off of South Shore Road. Andrew or Leslie, please.
Mr. Chairman, we had some discussion about this particular article at the last hearing. What we are proposing is that the one developed property in this group, number eleven, South Shore Road, be included, that we move forward with that particular zoning change. To the north of it are four vacant lots, which we would remove at this time, and in general, the referral back to the Surfside Area Work Group. We'd be looking for a comprehensive proposal to deal with this vacant land and some of the other properties. So...
Especially the Surfside Area Plan, Planning Committee, I think is what it's called now.
Whatever.
Whatever that is, whatever we are now.
Okay.
So I'm confused there.
Go ahead. This is the time to get things spread away.
So the Malcolm property is coming out for the moment?
Correct. And the one property that has the developed house on it...
Yeah, on the corner of Werewear.
Correct. Would be included. And that would extend the R forty district from across the street.
I was going to say, it's across the street.
Correct.
All right.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is still open on this. Anyone wishing to comment? Hearing none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, and...
Motion to make a positive recommendation as amended.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article fifty-three. Zoning map change from LUG two to LUG one for properties located off of Maya Comet Road, South Shore Road, and Werewear Lane. Andrew, Leslie, please.
Mr. Chairman, this article had a great deal of testimony at the last hearing, and because of what staff sees as a need to revisit the work of the Surfside Area Group, we recommend no action. The board adopted a motion of no action at this time, and this and the property in the previous article would be part of that referred back to the group for further study.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board? Public hearing is still open at this point. Would anyone like to comment on it?
I do have a comment.
Yeah, please.
Andrew, I don't, I'd have to go back and look. It's been, what, two years since we did the Surfside Area Plan? I don't think we covered this in the plan. I thought it did cover the Housing Authority property, came down behind Malcolm's, and did not include this.
That's correct. There would have to be a boundary amendment to look at this, and I think it's something, again, that the group might be partially differently constituted because it could include some other property between Maya Comet Road, South Shore Road.
That would require the Planning Commission also to redo the map. Now, the reason why I question this is because we specifically left this out when we drew the lines, because we thought Maya Comet Ave. and Maya Comet Road...
Right.
Anything surrounding Maya Comet Pond really needed to be its own thing, because they had a whole different thing going on over there than what was going on in even the Badlands and east and the Surfside. So we didn't want specifically to bring this up and bring this up, because they had nothing to do with us. They're off of Maya Comet Road and had a whole different vernacular over there. So I don't know if you really want to refer that back to us or create a Maya Comet Area Plan Work Group.
If you want my opinion on the matter, I think that there is a distinct area between, basically, the open space of the railroad bed and the open space of the pond. I think there's a cross needed. I understand there's a different potential character, but I think there might be an advantage to connecting transportation systems. There might be an advantage for utility placement that needs to be looked at, I think, more comprehensively. So I think we should discuss it at the Planning Commission, but I, my sense is that that area has well-defined boundaries, and by leaving the small groups of lots out, I don't know that we did them the best service here.
Go ahead.
My other comment is, is that everybody in the Surfside area was involved, and these guys came and they said, "Well, we're not involved, we're not involved," and they never came back again, because they said, "No, we'll be in our Maya Comet area, because we're off of Maya Comet Road, Maya Comet Ave." And so they've had absolutely no input whatsoever into the Surfside Area Plan, because that's why I'm concerned about bringing them into our work group at the Surfside Area Plan Work Group, when we've actually never discussed them and have no attachment to them, never spoken to them after the first meeting. So that's why I think we have to have that conversation.
And I hear what you're saying at this point, but I think the venue for that conversation is going to reside at the PNEDC, so that's going to be a May thing, and there'll be some opportunities to have some discussions to that, so we can come up with a game plan about how that'll begin to proceed, but I think the fundamental thought is still pervasive here.
So this particular one is take no action, the whole thing, right?
Correct.
Correct. And the public hearing is still open at this point, so I don't know if anyone wants to comment on this. Not seeing anything.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And a second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, and pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to take no action.
Take no action. Thank you. And do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article fifty-four is a zoning map change and zoning bylaw amendments to the map entitled Town and Country Designations for the Maya Comet Green Belt. A zoning map change from LUG two to LUG three for properties off of Maya Comet Road, Maya Comet Village, and Surfside Road. A zoning map change from R ten to LUG three for properties off of Maya Comet Road. A zoning map change from C-Tech to LUG three for properties off of Surfside Road, and amendments to the map entitled Town and Country Designations in order to remove the properties included in this article from the town district and to place them in the country district are proposed. Andrew, Leslie.
I have to make a comment first.
Yes, ma'am.
I am the chairman of the Housing Authority.
Yes.
And the Housing Authority did not want these lots, and on Maya Comet Road, to be included in the change, which is why you've removed them, Andrew.
Correct.
So I just need to put on the record, I am the chairman of the Housing Authority, and we want them removed.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, as Ms. Williams has mentioned, those articles were removed. There is a parcel on Maya Comet Pond further down, further to the south, that's been removed. And we're focused on the area between Otakomi, Maya Comet Road, and Surfside Road, so we are recommending moving forward with the article's intent on those properties, bringing that all under the green belt, all under one zoning district of LUG three. That property is, most of it is owned by the Land Bank already. There's a few town-owned parcels. Some have Native American sensitivity on them, so basically, we're removing the development potential from that particular land and incorporating it into a comprehensive green belt.
Perfect. Any other comments or questions? Public hearing is still open on this. Would anyone like to comment? Not seeing anyone.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to make a positive recommendation as amended.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article fifty-five is a zoning map change from RC, ROH, R one, R ten, and R twenty to R forty for properties located off of Commercial Wharf, New Whale, Washington Streets, Harborview Way, East Creek Road, Mill Street, North Liberty Street, Galen Avenue, Cato Lane, Grove Lane, Hummock Pond Road, and Somerset Road. Andrew, Leslie, please.
Mr. Chairman, if you remember, there was a concern raised at the last meeting about one particular property, and that's shown on part five of your maps. It's the property on Cato Lane that was recently purchased by the Land Bank, and there was a question of whether there had been a set out of certain land for future development, which in fact, there has been. So the description of that property has been modified to be a portion of. It's section four of the article, and you can see that it cut out a piece, this is in the R ten district, so it cut out a piece around the existing house, which will remain in R ten. And that is consistent with the Land Bank purchase and the Land Bank plans for the property.
Perfect.
So there's no other changes to the parcels.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
Aye.
Public hearing is still open on this. If anyone would like to comment on it? Not seeing anyone.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
I just have to make a statement.
Go ahead.
I think it's inappropriate for the Land Bank to buy property that's not part of the green belt, that's smack in the middle of fairly high-density development. I think it's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous, because if you look at the surrounding construction, that close to the schools, that close to Mid Island, da-da-da-da-da, and it's pulled these pieces right off of development in an area that's already developed, which just the family held on to this for a while, so it wasn't subdivided, and it's not connected to any green belt of any kind, or already snapping up over sixty percent of the island that can't be built on. That's ridiculous. Just had to say it.
Okay.
Absolutely ridiculous. I support most of their acquisitions, but this one is ridiculous, just as much as a monument of the college laundromat that we chained ourselves to.
True.
In the old days.
All right, board members, what?
So I'll make a motion to make a positive recommendation.
Okay.
The part's not in it.
Second.
Discussion.
Is that as amended, Andrew?
Yes.
Yes. Duly noted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article fifty-seven. Zoning map change from R twenty to LUG one and LUG two to LUG three for properties located off of Duke's Road, Hawthorne Lane, Millbrook Road, Burnt Swamp Lane, and Millbrook Road. Zoning map change from R one, R ten, and R one, sorry, R ten, and R twenty to R forty for properties off of Mill Street, North Liberty Street, Galen Avenue, Cato Lane, Grove Lane, Hummock Pond Road, and Somerset Road. Zoning map amendment to modify the map entitled Town and Country Designations for properties off of Duke's Road and Crooked Lane. So Andrew or Leslie, you're up, please.
Mr. Chairman, there's a little bit of a cut-and-paste error in this.
I just noticed that, yeah. That was just, it threw me off for a second.
We are looking, and again, if you look at your map, there's Article fifty-seven. So we're focused on R twenty to LUG one and LUG two to LUG three. This is Duke's Road, Hawthorne Lane, Millbrook Road, Burnt Swamp Lane, and Millbrook Road. So the second part of that on the agenda is incorrect.
Got it.
This is the first public hearing on this matter, and we have one change, which is the elimination shown on your map of map fifty-six, one eighty-five point four, fifty-three Duke's Road. That property now is, has applied for building permit, and basically that, there's been, that would basically protect them from the zoning change anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And it was the subject of another article at the special town meeting, including them in the sewer district, so at this point, we think it's best to leave that one out. This is an area that came up a little bit for discussion in the, about the extension of sewer district, of the sewer district to this area. The sewer district extending to this area has some health-related reasons to do so. It's in the Hummock Pond Overlay District, and however, some of the zoning, we feel, needs to be adjusted to keep its existing character. So really, a low-density character. The change from R twenty to LUG one, twenty thousand to forty thousand, matches the existing character of the lots, and then the open space going from LUG two to LUG three, again, extends that green belt into the neighborhood.
Go ahead.
Andrew, who was this lot?
Which lot?
The one that's coming out?
I believe it's Mr. Warden.
Okay, so this is the one that got subdivided with the barn on one side and perhaps we just approved with the HCC on the other. He's got a building permit for the new house?
The building permit has not technically been issued at this point, but it is imminent. It's been in for, I think, four weeks or so. So anyway, it's about to be issued.
So he's okay, because I was worried about...
Okay. Any further questions by the board? Ladies and gentlemen, public hearing open. Mr. Cohen, if you would, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Cohen, I represent Mr. Warden, and since you're doing what I want, I'll skip my speech on it, but I do have one technical question.
Sure.
Which is, since the subdivision, it's fifty-three and fifty-five Duke's Road, and I just don't know if the map and parcel that you're addressing is both numbers.
It is.
It is, yeah. I thought it might be. I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I speak as a member of private citizen?
Please.
First of all, I need to disclose that fifteen Burnt Swamp Lane is in my family as ownership.
Yep.
And I had a technical question for staff. Will it be going from forty thousand square feet to a minimum of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet on that lot?
Eighty to twenty.
It's eighty to a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Yeah, Andrew, you said fifty-five Duke's Road was coming off as well, too? I'm sorry, because I'm just looking at the, fifty-three is.
Fifty-three is currently carried as one property.
Okay.
They have not caught up to the fact that it's been divided.
Got it. All right. Thank you. I do appreciate it. Public hearing's still open, so I don't know if anyone else has any comments on this? Not seeing anything? Pleasure of the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
Motion to make a favorable recommendation as amended.
Okay. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Aye.
It's okay.
Who's favorite?
Article fifty-eight, which is a zoning map change from LUG to SR twenty or LUG one for properties located off of Sanctity and Baxter Roads. Andrew, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, this is an article that has been developed because of some ongoing negotiation regarding relocation of Baxter Road.
Mm-hmm.
It's dependent upon negotiations which have not finalized yet, so this article is not ready for a motion.
I agree.
From you, so we would request that you make a, provide a motion at town meeting, again, once the negotiations have been completed. So it may be postponed.
We don't know what's happening.
Again, there's, I think, as you know from some of my discussions with you...
Right, yes.
That this is a complicated matter.
It is.
It's been made more complicated by the lack of consensus by anybody, and this is one of many potential options that we're looking at. Not all options require town meeting approval, and this has never been an all-or-nothing type article.
Right.
But we don't have an actual motion ready for you tonight, and it will be something that will be presented as a technical amendment if it's to move forward in any sort of fashion.
Okay.
Does that mean, can I ask the stupid question?
Yeah.
Does that mean that we're going to be meeting at eight o'clock in the morning on that Saturday of town meeting?
Probably.
Can I make that note?
We're going to post it for eight forty-five, but yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Breakfast?
Be there a few minutes early.
On you? Nope. We're making me get there early.
All right. And the public hearing is open for this still, so is anyone wishing to comment on this? So I gather, Andrew, that this should be continued, right? Oh, sorry, Rhoda, I apologize. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. For the record, Rhoda Wyman, I'm representing some of the abutters of this property.
Yes, ma'am.
And as Mr. Wors just said, we're still in negotiations, I believe. We submitted a plan yesterday that we had prepared to look at an alternative, to think about whether we could work something out with the abutters. That hasn't happened yet. We're hoping it will, but we're not sure. So I appreciate you not making any recommendation on it tonight.
Yeah, I think we're all kind of in agreement here at this stage.
Thank you.
So, board members?
I'll make a motion to...
Continue.
Continue.
Continue?
Yes. Until...
We usually have to give a time and date certain...
Before fifth?
Should I continue to the twenty-fourth or the fifth? I mean...[1625.83] I mean.
Or do you want to, do you want to continue to the meeting of the tenth?
Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready, the, the printed motion will be the, on our, uh, a, a.
A motion will be provided at town.
Motion will be provided at a town meeting, so as long as you can agree to that, and then.
I think we're.
And then we'll meet just before.
We will, we will re-advertise and let you know about, you know, if we, if this, if negotiations conclude earlier, we want to get it before you as early as possible.
Mm-hmm.
But so, I would, I would not continue it at this point, I would.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Oh.
Accept that particular.
I understand where you're going with this now.
Printed recommendation at this point.
If, if the negotiations keep going and we close the public hearing now, we can't take any further testimony to fix it. You would just do it in the motion?
You will, we will reopen it, provided we have time.
There you go, I assume.
I'll, I'll take the motion back on continuing, I'll make a motion to.
Close, the first thing, close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
All right, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
I'll make a motion that we will have a recommend, a recommendation at town meeting.
Yes.
At a town meeting.
There you go. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, thank you.
Same thing going on there.
So that brings us to Article fifty-nine, which is a zoning map change from S R twenty to L U G three for properties located off Baxter Road. Andrew?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we heard some testimony at the last meeting that there was, I, I will characterize it as a certain sensitivity about changing this particular zoning at this time, even though it's completely consistent with our past actions. So under those circumstances, I'd recommend no action at this time, but I do expect that we will revisit this at some point. Again, I think it's irresponsible to leave property that's been, already been subject to considerable damage in higher-density districts.
Yep.
And the actions of the board in the past is, just down the, just down the coast here at Codfish Park, is to change that, once that particular development has been impacted.
Mm-hmm.
So for this year, I would recommend no action on this particular article.
Great, thank you. Board members, any comments? Public hearing is still open on this, so anyone wishing to comment? Seeing no one.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And a second, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Can't just assume you have.
I know, he's digesting at this point.
Aye.
But I don't.
Aye, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, but I also noticed he's not catching the chair, saying, wait a second.
Before I.
I'll make a motion to take no action.
And the second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article sixty.
Mr. Chairman, this is an article that changes a number of properties.
Yes.
In the country overlay district to the lowest intensity district. There was some advertising issues with this article the last time that had been corrected.
Okay.
So the motion that it's included in the packet is what we recommend you proceed with.
All right. Board members, discussion?
I've got to get this, please. We've got zoning maps.
Yells at?
There's no amendment on this then?
No.
No.
One, one.
The public hearing is open on this, so if anyone would like to comment?
What do we?
Seeing no one rising to the occasion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. And.
Can we add amendment? Or no amendment?
Um, there's a small amendment of a parcel.
Yeah, there's a roadway parcel that was shown on the map. Usually, they don't have map and parcel numbers, but this particular one did, so we had to add it into the motion.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to recommend favorably as amended.
Got it?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I, eyes have unanimously. Article sixty-one, Andrew, Leslie?
Mr. Chairman.
Leslie.
This article was discussed at the last meeting. We held it because the deputy police chief had raised an issue about fueling stations being moved over to the Four Fairgrounds property for municipal vehicles. We have talked with the consultant and made an amendment to the article that would exempt municipal use from the prohibition on underground fuel tanks.
Yep.
And in addition, there's a strikeout of language that just is irrelevant and isn't a practice that we use. So I would recommend that you give this article positive motion as amended.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Public hearing is still open on this, would anyone like to comment? Seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorably as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article sixty-two, Leslie, sure isn't.
Article sixty-two, we talked about the last meeting as well. These are some substantive changes to the parking, driveways, off-street loading facilities, sections of the bylaw. We have received some comments, we're still working on this motion, it's in development. You'll need to continue this to the meeting on Monday, March tenth, but we would like to hear any comments that the board has leading into that, so we can incorporate those into the motions.
Okay, board members?
Or motion.
Any questions? Discussion?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Ah, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Exactly.
That's okay, I just need to formally ask at this point. So if there's nothing from the board, public hearing is open on this, is anyone wishing to comment? You're now in order to go ahead.
I'll make a motion to continue to March tenth.
Tenth, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article sixty-four, Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, we asked this to be continued. There are some substantive changes to section one thirty-nine thirty-three A, which is pre-existing non-conforming structures and uses.
Mm-hmm.
We have had an extensive discussion with town council about the proposed changes. We received input from one of the local attorneys, who's frequently before the Board of Appeals, and, you know, we recommend that you give this a positive recommendation with the amendments as shown in yellow highlight.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or discussion at this stage? Not seeing anything? The public hearing is still open on this, would anyone like to comment on it? Seeing no comment.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to make a favorable recommendation.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Thank you. Brings us to Article sixty-five. Leslie, you're up, please.
All right. Mr. Chairman, this article also deals with pre-existing non-conforming lots, and specifically, it addresses the allowances for unimproved lots. We've gone over this one with town council as well, and recommend that you give it a positive recommendation with the changes as shown in yellow.
Okay. Board members, any questions or discussion with staff? This public hearing is still open at this point, so if anyone would like to comment on it?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
Motion to make a favorable recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article sixty-six.
Mr. Chairman, this was a citizen article. We did not really talk about this at length before.
Right.
And the motion is printed in your packet. The intent of this was to change the apartment requirement, so that apartments could be located on the first floor of commercial structures. We have refined the proposal a little bit, to include that an apartment shall not occupy more than fifty percent of the first floor area, and shall not be located in a portion of the structure that serves as any elevation facing a street. So that the commercial character of the building will be maintained, and the residential portion would be in the rear or someplace that's not so prominent.
Okay.
Have you talked to Chris about it? Have you talked to the, the author?
I have not heard from the author on this, no. But I believe it accomplishes what they're trying to do, because they went to the Board of Appeals, and they were urged to withdraw their variance request. And so they brought forward this article.
Okay. Okay.
I see there is a discussion about it.
Any other discussion by the board? Public hearing is open on this as well, so anyone wishing to comment? Seeing no one rising to the occasion. Oh, yeah, please.
I don't really care about this one, but I do have a question. When Leslie said facing the street on a corner lot, would that be just the front, or is it any street?
Yeah, any street.
Yeah.
So where are you going to put the apartment if it's got a double frontage?
On the back.
On the back, is on the side?
The apartment could be on the side, but it would need to be entered from the back.
Yep.
All right. I've had enough, dealt with enough of these corner lots over the years, that sometimes it is not enough to enter in from the back without being in a setback, and you can't enter from the interior side, because they could be on a setback there. A lot of these lots that are on corner lots are these small, wacky lots in, you know, pretty high-density places, so I'm having a problem with that part of it. And I was having a problem with it before, but we just really never got to discuss it. So I have a little bit of an issue not facing the street. I would elect a side, you know, not facing, I don't know where the frontage, because they get double frontage, that's the problem.
But, but the point here is, this is for the apartment on the first floor. This, so on the second floor, on the third floor, in the basement, it can be in any location.
Say whatever.
It's just the first floor, and the point is to not use up space that's appropriate for commercial with residential.
But if you have a set of stairs, because I've lived in one like this, where you enter from, let's say, the double frontage side, you enter, you rear, it's in the rear, but it's entering from the side where the parking is and where they have the double frontage piece? Are you considering that there are entrance steps to the interior? It's got a door facing the street, but it could very well be a back door to another structure. It could be the back door to the storage area from the commercial. You can't tell ninety percent of the time. So that's why I'm having trouble with this facing the street thing. I don't have trouble with the other part of it, but the facing the street thing is troublesome to me, having seen it so many times at the H T C and at the Z B A in the years past with a double-fronted setback issue.
I don't know.
I'm having a problem with that. So I don't know where to go from here. Because it, it could be simply an entrance into, and it's not facing, but the entrance is right there. Facing is the, is what I'm having an issue with.
Continue to March tenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think there's some tinkering we can do here.
All right. So you want to continue this then?
Yeah. This is Chris Murray.
Yes.
Yep. So is that your motion then, Lynn, to continue this?
Do you want to take any public testimony?
I didn't see anyone jumping up from the public at this point about it.
Continuing to March tenth.
Aside of Mr., all right, and a second, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article sixty-seven, Leslie, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is the technical correction article.
Mm-hmm.
This was continued so we could refine some language on the ground cover.
We've got sixty-eight.
Definitely, oh, did I skip ahead?
Yeah, this is sixty-seven.
Oh, whoops, already flipped my page over, sorry. Okay, on sixty-seven, the only change to that would be removal of item number three.
Right.
Because the earlier articles where we intended to phase out the L C district did not work out as planned, so we need to leave the L C in the use chart for now. So we recommend that you give this a positive recommendation as originally printed in the warrant.
Okay.
Oh, no, not as originally printed in the warrant, as originally printed in the warrant with number three removed.
As amended.
As amended now, yeah.
Okay.
Discussion on this.
Is this a public hearing?
It will be a public hearing in a minute, yeah, but do you guys have any comments?
No, I'm just saying this.
Yeah. And this, since the public hearing is still open, I'll take any testimony, if anyone would like to comment? Seeing no one rising to the occasion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Pleasure.
Motion to make a favorable recommendation as amended.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article sixty-eight, Leslie, please.
Mr. Chairman, on Article sixty-eight, we needed to make some adjustments to the ground cover definition, and Andrew and I were working out some final language on that right before the meeting.
Is that some of the language?
He's going to have to rely on his handwriting.
Good luck with that.
Oh, don't, no, come on.
We may need just a second.
Yeah, go ahead, take your turn.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is slightly different than what you have in your packet. So what we would propose here is where it talks about decks and unenclosed porches not over or under an unenclosed above-grade interior space.
Yep.
We would then be adding the words, and, under decks and enclosed, and any substantially below-grade finished or unspate, or unfinished space, under decks and enclosed porches.
Okay.
So.
All right, hold on.
Can we do the ground cover?
To be exempt from ground cover.
We're not doing that language, and we're not doing the one that Leslie and I talked about, so we're doing.
We, we're grouping it in a different space, but the same language, because the issue is decks and unenclosed porches that are above grade have a different issue, because there would be enclosed space underneath them if it's above grade. Under grade, we've had a bizarre situation where some space in a bulkhead under an open porch was defined as ground cover, which.
It wasn't the bulkhead, because bulkheads are exempt. It was the fact that the deck, they took the bulkhead off, ran the open deck across it, and all of a sudden, the wine cellar under the deck is now counting. When it didn't count when it was a bulkhead door, it's now counting for ground cover, according to market.
Anyways.
And now they're at the Z B A for a variant.
Don't, hopefully, we won't see a lot of these, but if the question comes up in the future where some underground stairs or something has been converted.
Yeah.
This will cover the issue.
Perfect.
Read it to me again.
Why don't we just wait and we'll give you revised language on March tenth?
I think that sounds like capital idea, but the public hearing is open on this, so would anyone like to comment?
A lot more stuff in the hearing here.
With where this is heading? You'll have another chance on March tenth, the revised language, if need be.
Because it's tricky.
That's what I'm hearing.
Really tricky.
Okay, board members? Do you have anything else on this, or?
Yeah, there's a lot of apartment stuff in this one also, or am I backing up on pages here? Yeah, no, there's a lot of apartment stuff in here.
There's a separate definition, I mean, you have to be clear.
Right.
That there is apartment and apartment building.
Right.
An apartment is residential space in a commercial building, and apartment building is a apartment use by itself, so with no commercial use.
How does that do with garage apartments?
It, it doesn't, that's a totally separate, separately defined term.
So it's not dealing with any of that stuff?
No.
Okay. There's just too many apartments flying around here. And it doesn't deal with accessory apartments and all the rest of that stuff?
No.
Sanity.
Separate use chart, separate entire concept only allowed in certain CN, two zoning districts.
I just don't want to give them any room to go down on that.
All right, well, you'll have an opportunity to discuss, I think, with...
The thing has to go over then, doesn't it? Because it's in the same article.
Yes, yes.
I think the pleasure of staff here is to continue this to 3:10, so if there's going to be further discussion with the board, you may, you may want to hammer that out before then.
Make that motion.
But from the public, I'm not seeing anything else, so... I already have. I already did just a few moments ago, so Mr. Law, your motion is in order at this point.
Motion to March 10th.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Any further comment from the audience or from the board? Hearing nothing at this point. Again, I thank you for your utmost patience and indulgence tonight to help us get here through this. So thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Anything else we need to talk about?
I don't think so. Not that I'm aware of. To...
We, we might have somebody who wants to talk about other business.
Oh, did you, okay. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you have a moment for a personal comment?
Yeah, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Arminetti, Richmond Company, 57 rear Old South Road. And with me tonight is one of my colleagues, Patty Rogaline, our Director of Community[1582.88]